Good evening. I will call the August 18th, 2020 Committee of the Whole to order. It is 6:03 PM. And I will call Ms... Who's going to call the roll? They're going to be Russ? Okay, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Walters.
Here.
Alderman, there. Alderman Asia.
Excused.
Alderman Green.
Excused.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderwoman Emerson.
Here.
Alderwoman Mary Jane Van Besskirk.
Here.
Alderman Bill Van Besskirk.
Excused.
Alderwoman Bonnie Mims.
Here.
Alderman Derek Ward.
Here.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Okay, approval of the August 11th, 2020 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion? Ms. Mims is the first. Mary Jane, you have the second. Any conversation? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Green. Alderman Van Besskirk.
Yes.
Alderman Hunt.
Yes.
Alderwoman Mims.
Yes.
Alderman Walters.
Yes.
Alderwoman Emerson.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
All right. Passing unanimously. Okay, first one up for department... Departmental Budget Presentations. Our own Tracy Pham Municipal Judge for the Court. What do you have for us, Judge?
Everyone. I must say this is a little weird with this mask on, but we'll get through it. My budget is pretty much consistent from year to year. Not a whole lot changes as I have the smallest budget in the city. The bulk of the court budget is in the employee's salary and benefits. And then all the other things you need to run an office, the computer services, postage, office supplies, and things of that nature. So there's nothing out of the ordinary that I presented in this year's budget from previous budgets. Does anyone have any questions about the budget?
Ms. Emerson.
Thank you. Looking at this, and I know it was on the budget last year, but on the travel for professional development conference, forty-one... I mean, forty-one hundred dollars. I thought that was kind of high compared to all the other departments.
Well, I have three court clerks, and all the court clerks are required to attend conferences every year to keep their court clerk certifications. And as the municipal judge, I'm also required to have my own judicial education. And unfortunately, normally those conferences are not held in Kansas City. They're normally held like out of the area. Usually, like the judges' conference is always at the Lake of the Ozarks, as well as the court clerk's conference. But the court clerk's conference this year has gotten postponed to next year, so they're not having that. The judges actually had theirs virtually. I am on the Board of the Judges Association. I did attend that conference to help them with it, which was last week. The other expenses, I'm on the Board of the Missouri Municipal and Associate Circuit Judges Association. And as a board member, I'm required to travel to the meetings an additional three times a year.
Okay. That's... I wasn't aware of that, but I'm very glad that you brought that up. Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Mr. Walters.
Are any of those conferences being held virtually?
The court clerks, they just postponed theirs till next year. They weren't doing theirs virtually at all. The judges... The judges did theirs virtually.
Okay, so you have two left to go to? This coming... Is this going forward is what I mean?
Normally, the judges' conference and the court clerk's conference is in May. The judges' conference got pushed back to August. We just had it last week. The court clerks have decided to have theirs next year. They just abandoned the whole thing this year. They didn't actually have their conference.
I understand, but going forward, there's no plan to hold them virtually?
No, everyone's just kind of doing it on a case-by-case basis, waiting to see what happens. But I know the judges... I can't speak for the Court Clerks Association, but I know that the Judges Association, we're already in the works to plan in planning the conference for next year now. Obviously, if the pandemic is still going the way it is, then they will probably do it virtually as they did this year.
Okay, I assume the cost would be lower for a virtual conference?
It's really not... I mean, it's not much lower. I mean, because you have your dues and you have your conference fees. You pay that. The only thing you wouldn't have would be your travel.
The travel and hotel and so forth.
Right, hotels, food. Meals, yes.
Hotel and meals, okay. So this year, we didn't spend any of that, I guess?
We didn't spend it for the clerks. We did spend it for the judge, for me.
I see.
Yes.
So we had some money coming back?
Yes.
How much... You know how much came back this year?
Well, the way the court... Budget works for the travel is we have... We collect the Judicial Education Fund, which is a dollar out of every court cost that we're allowed to collect statutorily. So just each employee is given a fifteen-hundred-dollar budget that they can use for education. And that's why the state says that.
Okay, if they don't use it, though, the money comes back to the general fund.
Correct.
What I'm curious is how much came back this year?
I'm not really sure, honestly, how much was come back with the... It would be whatever it was for the two court clerks to go to the conference that they didn't attend in May. So it'd be all their travel and... I mean, there's still fees associated with the associations. I guess that's the issue. Because they have to pay to be members of the associations.
No, I appreciate that, but I... My real question is how much, you know, came back? And if you can't answer it now, I understand.
I don't know the exact...
I can get it from...
I don't know the exact dollar amount.
Sound like a good email to everybody, if you would, Judge.
I can do that, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mims.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the other part of some of that is that the requirements that are paid for the packets, that even though they didn't go to it, that you have the materials that you have to pay for also. So you wouldn't have all of that information right now. Only reason you know that I pretty much know that is because of all the forensic conferences and the mandatory requirements. So you still got your dues and stuff to pay. So you won't have that information to bring forth to any of them until probably November or December anyway, because you still got that stuff to come out of your budget and pay for. I just want to thank you all for still staying on top of it because of knowing the requirements and then everything, but people trying to get the virtual piece done. So I appreciate it, and I just wanted to say that thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The Board for the Judges Association had a really difficult...
Can you hang on a minute till he silences his phone? Because I can't hear anything you're saying.
Sorry.
You turn that to silent, please, Mr. Walters.
Certainly.
The judges' conference, the Board had a really tough time because essentially what had occurred, they had to play in the conference like three times. And then at the end, one of the presenters pulled out like two days before the conference was supposed to start. So then they had to find someone to fill that position for the conference hours. So it was a difficult task, definitely.
And even when you pay for it, you also know that some of those fees don't come back to you anyway, so because of the deadlines and stuff that you have to meet.
Right.
So thank you. I like your budget.
I have one other quick question that's relevant, I think. So when those are collected at the time of court and you find somebody guilty and they pay those, do those have... Those fees have to go for that, don't they?
If you... Yes, if you have a...
You can't spend them on something else.
No.
So in reality, it's not going back to the general fund.
It's a separate...
Right.
...account.
Okay.
I mean...
So it's not going back to the general fund. It's going to stay in that?
It'll... Yes. We can collect up to fifteen-hundred dollars per employee, yes, to answer your question. So it's just a rolling fund. So when it gets to fifteen-hundred, you can't collect any more per employee.
Okay, thank you.
To answer your question, yes.
Thank you very much. All right, no one else? Thank you so much, Judge. Good to see you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next up is Damon Hodges, City Administrator and RSTP finance director for Citywide. What do you have for us, gentlemen?
Yes, good evening. You hear me pretty well?
Yes.
Okay. Our first one budget we'll be presenting is the Citywide budget. The budget's pretty straightforward from what it was last year, but there's two things. One is the salary study. It's something we discussed last year. This year, we put it in the budget itself and with estimated cost of thirty-five thousand. The other one is the... You see the emergency preparedness. That is your CARES funds. We put... You have to put the expenditure in your budget, and then the revenue will come from the CARES funds, which I'll discuss in our meeting regarding the agreement we have with Jackson County or proposed agreement with Jackson County regarding the CARES funds. We put nine-hundred thousand to show for what will be spent in the coming year as a reimbursement. And so you wanted to put it in your budget to show it, and then you'll show the revenue behind it. The other ones are pretty straightforward as far as what we had last year. We do add some Citywide branding, which was just part of our branding, of our overall marketing of the city. We decreased the amount of our credit card terminals. Last year, we did an installation of those terminals, spent some of that. And then this year, we're doing more than one thousand as for upkeep or anything that may happen with those terminals during that timeframe. So when you do see the amount increase from the three-thirty-one to the one-point-two, that is the nine-hundred thousand that come from your CARES funds. Any question on Citywide?
Mr. Myers.
Damon, as part of the branding, I know a pet project of yours has been redoing the website. Is that going to be on here this year, or are you planning on...
That's currently going on as we speak. We utilize the funds we have within our... Within the capital budget. And we actually will be coming to you all in the near future for some pictures as well. So we're currently working with our contractor regarding that as we speak.
Okay.
Anyone else on that particular... Mary Jane?
On here, you have tuition reimbursement, eight thousand dollars. How much have we used of that in years past?
It's been up and down, depending on who's in school. But this past year, I think we're close at three to four. It's over four thousand, close to four thousand of that.
So we are using some of that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
All right.
The Citywide cleanup coupons. You left that as the same as last year?
We did.
How much did we... Of that did we use last year? Do you know by chance?
Not offhand. I think the last I saw was just under... Just or just close to twenty thousand of what we used. I'm looking to see it on here. Is that further down? Next page. We're just around twenty thousand. We're actually looking at doing a program this coming fall to try to double up and increase the marketing. Part of it, I think it was down a little bit this year because of the... Because of COVID, not many people were able to come in. So we're looking at opportunities to maybe utilize some of those funds. We try to go into fall, maybe doing some type of program to help with that, on getting the work back out and also, you know, giving people another opportunity. Quite a few people brought like four of them this year already, which is a typical maximum. But this year, with the amount of... That we still have remaining in that fund, we typically try to do something in the fall to help out with the leave pickup and things of that sort.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Emerson?
On the salary study, who's going to be doing that?
We will have a consultant do that. It will be led by Debbie Duncan over our HR department. She will put out a RFP to have proposals. And we'll follow back up with you guys regarding it. But it will be a RFP that we'll put out, and then we'll have a consultant that will provide us that information back.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next.
The next one is administration expenses. Other than administration expenses, the personnel-wise, we've stuck with the same amount. We have not changed on that one. Office supplies is same along with your operating and your professional supplies. Postage, slight increase, maybe just the amount of mail that went out this past year. And with the amount of things we tried to do that was not person-to-person and try to utilize more mail this past year. Printing promotions are pretty much similar along with our dues and memberships. Kind of speaking to Alderman Walters, asked earlier, some of those as far as conferences-wise, I did not attend a conference this year, and then we didn't have any conferences. So those monies went back to the general fund. But upcoming year, we're proposing to go to those conferences if they have. Your... That goes down to your education and training and your meeting events. Computer services was very similar, nothing changed on any of them either. Open for any questions we may have.
I see in quite a few of the things, there is a insurance opt-out incentive. Okay. The opt-out insurance. Why do we offer that?
Why do we opt-out incentive? We offer it in order to allow our employees. It's less expensive for us not to have insurance for the employee if they choose not to. So it's incentive not to apply for them.
So we pay them even if they get insurance from someplace else?
Yes.
Okay, already thinks.
We've done that for quite a few years, haven't we?
I know.
Okay. Mr. Walters?
Yes. Mr. Hodges, could you give us a breakdown of the Mark dues and how they're spent? Send it to us.
Where are you at on that one?
It's halfway up the page under dues and memberships. Eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, so... So Mark is a... It's a regional council that we utilize. We utilize everything from helping us with personnel items to helping us with regional objectives that we may go through. We... It helps us with transportation. It helps us with being on committees. It helps us with the distribution of federal funds. Along with, here lately with COVID, it allowed us to help with... Helping us with meetings that we may have, coordinating items that we do regionally to allow us to have regional responses to different items. So it's kind of goes... Reaches us in quite a few areas within the city. We have things we can do with public works side, administration side, along with community development and things of that sort.
I understand that. What I'm looking for is like a breakdown of which goes where? How much we're spending, say, on public works? How much we're spending on administrative help? Is it possible that we could do this salary study through Mark and perhaps get a little bit more money for our buck?
We will definitely try. That will be a person that we'll reach out to. They do do some salary surveys, but not so much of a study. They offer that, and they'll check with other cities to see what you're... What you may be white, but the study would be more in-depth than what they typically offer. And we do utilize them to kind of help us get a mark of where we are salary-wise, but that's a survey, not a actual study, I'm looking at what you have.
Well, is the eleven thousand five hundred dollars just a group that they put... Just a one large figure they put together for whatever you use each year based on population? Or are there different programs? If you take it, you're charged for that. If you don't use it, you're not charged for it?
You are... Well, it's partly based off your size as far as your overall fees that you have to pay. But if you're looking for a breakdown of how much you pay for public works and how much for administration...
Yeah, I'd like to see how we're... How that's broke down, because I'm... I'd like to think we're... It's itemized.
We'll check with them and find out as far as the itemized billing. Okay.
Mr. Derek Ward.
Thank you. Mr. Hodges, what is... This is under dues and memberships. What is ICSC membership?
ICSC. That is International City... Oh, that is a Citywide. That's a membership that we have. The acronym, I have to find out exactly what the acronym stands for. But it is a service that we utilize for our city clerk service.
That's a pretty big chunk for dues. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what we get for that.
That's where she gets a lot of her certification, is it not? Yeah, she has to have those certifications.
And bonding.
And bonding.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that. I mean, I... But that seems like that's even more than the judge pays. So I'm just trying to figure out what it is. But it's a clerk's... A clerk's society.
Yeah, that's a pretty good use of membership is in that one.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Governing... Who's the next one? Governing body?
No, actually.
Law expenses.
Next one. Law. I have law, Mayor.
Our line was in before that, okay.
Next one that we have is law. Law expenses, pretty sure your first portion of there is our part-time employee, which is our city attorney, not city attorney, prosecutor, city prosecutor. And then our next one, legal, is our city attorney. Labor associates, which is represented by Jennifer Beard, the legal counsel that's appointed to us as a city. We increased it this year mainly because last year, this past year, we went over the amount. And so we looked at increasing it this past year in order to try to be within budget.
Okay. Anyone?
Next one.
See anything on that one? Yeah.
The next one is our risk management. It's the same as last year. We pretty much brought across the amounts for our budget.
Thank you. On the meals and travel, for five thousand dollars, is that included with the... Is that comes... Is that part buried into the education and training, or is that a separate item?
It's a separate line item if it's necessary. If you have something, it may have a claim situation, you may have to pay for your meals and travel if you have a situation there.
Did we spend much last year?
I'm aware of.
Okay, is... Do we typically spend five thousand dollars?
We could. We typically, we just keep the same budget amounts just in case. But if you have a situation where you're doing, like say, for instance, if you have to do a mediation or something like that and have to bring in someone else, you... Those things go... Will cost.
Are you... I'm sure that you're tracking how much money we got coming back that's unspent from this previous... From this previous budget year?
Yes.
Is that in here, what we're going to be viewing here?
What you mean is it in there?
Will it be in these papers that we're looking at this evening?
Repeat that one more time.
Will we be looking at that?
I don't know.
Will we be looking at... Yes, that will be part of your... As far as our revenue, we look at the entire budget, your revenue, if you have a fund balance, typically whatever's not spent that's within the general fund goes into your fund balance.
Okay. Could you... Could we have a running amount of that supplied to us? Or just showing for what we anticipate to be returned? Because I know from previous experience, I've seen it be over, you know, into a couple hundred thousand dollars in some instances.
Yeah, and that's part of like a... We can. We can. When we bring you the entire budget, we'll show you what those are. Those amounts are. And also, it was brought before when we had the mid-year, explaining that the past two years, if you have any fund balance, where do we go? And how much it was? Is that what you're asking? You want to track how much the fund balance is?
Yes, I'd like to have a little bit more time than the three days we get on these as a rule. So if we could, I'd appreciate it.
Mary Jane?
Could you explain to me health fare? Is that when they come up here and they do the blood pressure? Kind of a physical type thing on employees? Is that what that is?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Next one?
Public Works. Public Works. Public Works.
Well, I'll let them bring it forward, because some of mine haven't been in order.
You're right.
Our last one is a... Last one is the governing body. But actually, we kind of spoke to it a little earlier when Alderman Van Besskirk asked me about the cleanup coupons. But it's pretty straightforward as far as elected officials and the allowances we have there, along with our supplies, operating supplies, printing promotions, and meals and travel.
Anyone?
Where are we at?
Governing body expenses. It was behind Citywide.
Okay.
They may have stuck together some of the sheets, but it's right behind. It's the next sheet from Citywide.
All right. Anybody got any questions on elected officials? Nope, all right. Ready? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Aldermen. Before I get started this evening, I want to say thank you for continuing to let me lead the Public Works Department as the Director of Public Works. I got to give a big shout-out to Damon for his leadership since I've been here but through this budget process. And certainly got to give a big shout-out to Russ and his team. I tend to ask a lot of questions when it comes to budget, and Russ and his team have been more than patient with me. But what you see here tonight is a combination of all of our efforts, not just in director level and city administration, but my team as well in public works. We looked at actual bills over the last year or two. I looked at rolling averages of each line item over the last three years. And so focusing in on general fund, public works, a lot of what you see here, I'm very comfortable and confident that these are the dollar amounts that will need to continue to be successful in public works and provide the services that we will need moving forward into 2020, 2021 budget year. I'm open to any questions that you might have. I'm new to this process with you all, so however you want me to go about this, Mayor.
Mary Jane?
Okay. What is pavement training? It's on the second page, and it's... It's not a big... A dollar amount, but I'd just like to know what it is.
Pavement.
It's on the second page.
Alderman Van Besskirk, are we looking at the general fund?
Otto, one and then Busker, are we looking at the general fund expenses?
It's under meals and travel.
Uh, pavement training is a training that is provided by some regional experts about how to crack seal your streets, the best way to do patch repair work, things like that. I'm familiar with this training. I've been to it. I've sent folks to it. It's relatively low cost. It's generally not local in terms of being in Raytown or Kansas City. Staff members have to travel probably hour to two hours to go get the training. And it's probably a half a day training if that. That's the pavement training we're talking about.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it's well worth it, but I was just curious.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and here's another one. Contractual services, mat rentals, rentals, $3,300.
Yes, so, um, I left this in the budget, but I don't anticipate it being in the budget going into the next year. I should say the next budget year. Here's why. Right now, we're renting our mats from, um, oh, I forgot the name of the company, the vendor, but we're renting them from them. And, um, one of the things that I've, I've made pretty clear to the team in Public Works is that we want to look at purchasing our own mats and replacing them as needed. So, um, we're going to continue to look at that going into this year, even if, you know, if we don't spend that whole dollar amount, great. But I think we should look at purchasing our own mats. But in the event that we don't end up purchasing our own mats, we know that we have at minimum the dollar amount to continue renting them, um, needed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Emerson.
Thank you. Under, uh, let me see where it is, repairs and maintenance. On the fountain out here. It hasn't been in use for years and years. So I don't know why that's even in the budget.
Uh, are you talking about sprinkler system linearization?
No. Let me see where it was.
Which line item is it? If you give me the number, 53?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's under electricity.
Oh.
The fifth one down.
Which page?
Fountain for years and years and more years.
Oh, okay, third page.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, and I don't, I believe we still get electricity bills from that because there's electricity running to it. So you're still going to get bills to that. Um, but yeah, it's a small dollar amount. If, if we need to reduce that, we can, or eliminate it, we can.
Uh, and under repairs and maintenance on the fire department, why are we giving them $25,000 for, what do they do? It's the second part of that, the very last one on the second.
Which?
We're not. That was previous year.
Yeah, there's a, there's a dash in there for nothing, under the $2,000.
Okay, all righty.
Yeah, so on the column to the right is your budgeted, previous budget, and on the column to the left is the request, correct? Yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Emerson?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Myers.
Okay, so, uh, under contractual services, the KCPD radio connection fee, should that be under the police department? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Under contractual services on the second page, we're budgeting three grand and change for KCPD radio connection. Should that be under the police department or is that for Public Works use?
Yeah, no, that's actually Public Works.
For our radios.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we hold it in our budget, so it doesn't get confused. PD does pay their portion out of their budget, I believe.
And then the, the landlines for the phones is what, $5,000? That's like 415 bucks a month for phones. Is that, are we really paying 400? I mean, there's a lot of lines coming into City Hall, but is that like a pro reta share between the different departments? Or is that really what we're paying for phone lines?
Must be Citywide, I think, is what that is.
They're questioning if it's a portion of the city budget or the overall.
I mean, is the $5,000, I mean, is that just a?
That's a, their portion of.
That's Public Works' share for the entire city's budget for phone lines?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Anything else? Mr. Walters.
Yes, um, question. Well, first of all, just Damon, if we could number these pages in the future, it would be very helpful. My next question has to do, do we have anything set aside for street improvements as in street overlay, maintenance, like in that area?
I think that's one of the budgets coming up that I'm, we're going to go over. Or am I supposed to go over?
It's looking at like the expense. Do you have to go over the general fund?
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Mims.
This doesn't have, Mr. Mayor, this really is not in their budget because there's some things that they do that they don't even come in here and talk about. But what I want to thank you all for personally and publicly, for the woman that you all helped, that had the tadpoles, the sewage problem, all of that, that you all went out, which was an emergency, and y'all took care of that in the late hours. And I just needed to say to you all, thank you all for taking care of that particular problem. It was a mess. It had lizards and everything. So I just want to thank you.
Mayor, I can, uh, I want to answer Alderman Walters' question.
Sure.
Uh, moving away from the general fund, the transportation, uh, sales tax fund is where you will see, um, the, it's 20462-00152-300. Repairs and maintenance supplies and then 53600, repair and maintenance services. So that's where you're going to see some of our, uh, street, uh, maintenance items that we're looking to do, Alderman Walters, and those line items there.
Okay. I see them. Thank you.
Yeah, so one of the things that I, I briefly want to highlight is, um, in, in our budget, Public Works budget this year is a request for, uh, two new employees. And I'm going to try my best to make this work. So, right now, our setup in Public Works is as such. There's the Director of Public Works. There's the, we have an administrative assistant up here in the City Hall. We have a city engineer. We have a building, uh, building maintenance, uh, staff member, operations superintendent and a fleet supervisor. And each one of these individuals reports directly to me. What I tried to do is give you some idea in orange, what these individuals, uh, who report to me are responsible for. Some of them are, I, I didn't go into too much detail because I think administrative assistant, building maintenance custodian generally speaks for itself. But city engineer and, and operations superintendent, um, I, I hit on. And then I tried to give you some idea of the, the things that, um, I, I'm also working on. And as you can see, with each one of these roles, between city engineers, operations superintendent, myself, there's a number of tasks associated with them. One of the things that I, I think I've noticed since I've been here, even pre-COVID, but it's really shined since COVID, is the need for some help with facilities management. We don't have, the facilities management right now is broken up into three people. Myself, city engineer, operations superintendent. We had, on the custodial side, the city was functioning with a custodian, a full-time, one-member custodian, who focused on City Hall. And we had contractual services that we were using for nighttime cleaning. When COVID came, we felt better to protect our building, our residents, our, our employees by eliminating the contractual services. And our full-time custodian took control of everything and has done a reasonably good job. One of the things that has also came to light is fleet. So right now, we have, the way we're set up is we have a fleet supervisor and we have two mechanics that works under the fleet supervisor. And in 2020, whether, whether, um, you've known this or not, the only staff member we've had in fleet is the fleet supervisor. And we've not even had that individual for a whole year, this year. They were out for other reasons. But we've been functioning, we've been operating, we've been sending, uh, vehicles out to get serviced by vendors outside, away from the city, inside the city, but not us ourselves. And we've been within budget. We've been maintaining our budget. The challenge is the management part of fleet. There's maintenancing fleet and there's managing fleet. We don't have a vehicle equipment replacement program. You all know this. A lot of the time that I've been spending is on the management side of fleet. A lot of the time I've been spending over the last five, six months is the management side of facilities. I, I was hoping as the Director of Public Works coming in here to have a street maintenance program, to do, to, to have the things that I felt like as a director, we should, I should be doing. You know, looking at grants, funding opportunities, things like this. And these are becoming increasingly more challenging as time goes on because, not just COVID, but because of the facility, facilities needs management, fleet needs management. We've also, as you all know in the budget from last year, have continued to incorporate asset management software into our, um, into the city staff as a, as a resource. We've, we've just completed the demonstrations from four, from four asset management programs. And we hope to select one of those vendors to help us because that provides work order system, scheduling, personnel, tracking, budget tracking. It provides, it's a great resource to have and it's well worthy of its dollar amount. But having somebody who knows how to work with the system like that and have the attention to it is a huge, huge benefit and should be a priority. So what I'm telling you all that, what I'm proposing in my budget, is this layout. Director of Public Works, we still have an admin assistant, still have a maintenance operations superintendent, still have a city engineer. We still have a fleet position. Um, we intend to keep the same person in their position. But a deputy director of public works and/or an assistant director of public works, whatever we decide to call this position. And they are over fleet management, facilities management and asset management. And we, and the custodian, which you might recall, we have one full-time custodian. We're going to have two. That's what's proposed in this budget. And the second custodian will have, will work a later shift than the first one so he can continue to control the health and safety of our, our, our employees here in City Hall, but also in our operations building and our fleet building. Because right now, nobody cleans those but the employees. And I feel like our employees can be doing other things than cleaning their building. Things that they should be doing, that they're hired to do. So, I wanted to be very transparent with you all this evening and explain to you that these positions are in this budget that's presented to you this evening. What, what you, what you also might notice is we had two mechanics in the previous setup, in our current setup right now. Well, in the future setup, we don't have mechanics. We have what I would say is more like a fleet coordinator, um, who's doing a great job right now. But they're just not a fleet manager. And so if you have any questions about this, I'm, I'm still here to, to answer any questions. I just wanted to show you this, that this is what I'm proposing moving forward.
Very good. Couldn't turn on the lights, please? Thank you. Yeah, we had, we had, uh, two, two, uh, janitorial folks here in this building for a very long time before they cut it back to one. And I'm not sure how Dave's even caught, been able to keep up with it, even without COVID. It's a very big job and there's a lot of repair work to be done and there's a lot of other things to be done. So I think that's a very wise move, especially with COVID and the other buildings. Uh, and I agree with you. I see street department people up here, Public Works people having to do that kind of work when they could be out there doing other things. I, I agree with you. I think it's a great idea. Eric Ward?
Thank you. I guess one thing that jumps out at me about this proposal is that you would have a deputy director who has one supervisor and two janitors? I mean, that seems like a pretty big title for managing a whole downline of three people.
Yeah, sure. So, um, you know, one thing I'm always cognizant of, Alderman Ward, is job titles mean things to people. The responsibility is certainly there. And as you notice, where I've placed them in this org chart is they're also going to help assist in supervising our city engineer and operations superintendent. Maybe not as directly as I do. But what I intend to maintain here is my attention toward operations and engineering. And, and project management, project development, project programming, budgeting. That's where my attention, I feel like, should be. The deputy director, um, while I realize it can be a huge job title, what I'm hoping that we, um, gain in terms of candidates are people who are seeking to make the next step by, by, uh, responsibility and job title. And, and so I felt like deputy director, it grabs attention. It would grab my attention. So.
Yeah, have you considered perhaps hiring a contract employee, uh, full-time, but a contract employee to come in and handle some of this? I mean, uh, I'm, I'm just not convinced this approach works for me.
Sure. Um, no, not looked at a contract employee. What, what I feel is that the workload here is not going to go away. It's gonna, it's gonna remain and it's going to grow because.
We could, we could always hire that person two years from now if that, if that's true, if it pans out and it's stable and it grows. But this is kind of a new experiment, so I would hate to hire somebody and then find out and this approach doesn't really work and then we've got to let somebody go. So if they're a full-time employee.
Sure, no, I understand. I think, um.
I guess what I would say about that is that we have a whole fleet. We have a whole fleet. The city's had it for a long time. We've not had somebody manage the fleet.
Well, I know. We've had people in charge of managing the fleet.
And I, and I, and we are doing that. We're making steps. We're making progress.
But is that something perhaps we could hire out to a consultant to manage that fleet for us?
I, I think, I think that we could look at that.
Is that, is that a full-time equivalent position, managing the fleet?
I do, I do believe it is.
I do believe it is.
And do we have somebody doing that full-time now?
Well, you have me doing that. And my, my, again, the, the reason why I'm proposing this is because I'm doing that along with all the facilities things that are going on.
And I get that. And I mean, that's, that may be, that's probably too much for you. But certainly you're not working 40 hours a week doing fleet and 40 hours a week doing.
And that's why fleet is not the only thing associated with this individual.
It's also facilities and it's also the asset management overall, the program we're looking to.
facilities and it's also the asset management overall, the program we're looking to implement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
I'll have to come back to it.
Okay. Um, so we're almost done here. So, Mr. Mayor, I move to table the department budget presentation until after the Board of Aldermen's regular session.
Give her a second. Second by Ms. Mims. Okay. We'll take it back up. If you all vote for it, take it back up as soon as we're done with the meeting. It's a very short meeting. So any conversation seen, then call the rule on that, please.
Alderman Green?
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Hunt?
Yes.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Jen Van Hears?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
You're muffled.
Yes.
I'm here. Yes. Let's do it.
Alderwoman Bonnie, Bonnie Mims?
Yes.
Alderman Greg Walters?
Yes.
Alderwoman Janet Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Mary Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Eric Ward?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned on this meeting until after the regular meeting. Be back in here. It's seven o'clock so we can get started with the regular meeting. Let's take a real short break.